I'd like to call to order the Board of Rattlin City Public Schools Board of School Commissioners our May 11, 2021 meeting. For those who would like to join me, please rise to do the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance
To the flag
To the flag of the United States
Of America And to the public for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice
Okay, thank you. Well, the clerk note, the secretary note that all are in attendance except Stephanie. that was our own Charlie, Stephanie and Charlie. I'd like to have an approval of the agenda.
I'll approve the agenda.
You'll make the motion to approve? Any seconds? Anne, second? Are there any additions, deletions, changes? Allison?
I'd like to pull out the minutes from the previous meeting.
Sure, we can do that. Okay, Anne?
I'd like to pull out the letter for project graduation.
Okay, we can do that. We will take both of those, both of those up next. Okay, are there any objections to the consent agenda? Okay, hearing none, then it is the agenda then is approved. Now, let's look at the consent agenda. Allison, you wanted the minutes of the previous meeting pulled out?
Yes, I just wanted a correction reflected in the minutes.
Okay, and what is that correction?
So I wanted the minutes to reflect that Mr. Cavakis claimed as chair he can invalidate prior votes, and he stated it was illegal, and the meeting with, he was meeting with the attorney in the morning and would have a response to the board the following afternoon.
Okay, thank you. Anything else? Okay, with that correction, do we have a motion for the approval of the minutes?
So moved. Second.
All those in favor? Any opposed? Okay, so Carrie, Anne, you wanted the letter of project graduation pulled out?
Oh, yes, please. It was unclear to me. The letter that was included in our packet is a letter from Mr. Olson noting that a check is enclosed with the amount approved by the board, but we didn't talk about this, and I'm, in the past, we have voted on this amount, so I think that needs to be redone.
Okay, would you like to make a motion for an amount of donation for project graduation?
I would move, traditionally, I think it's been $2,000, is that correct? I would move to donate $2,000. I'm not sure where it comes from, help, to project graduation for the 2021 class.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, any discussion?
Hurley, could I ask, Anne, sorry, just for the sake of clarity, you're asking for 2,000, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Is that what was in the letter originally?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, I'm just
Got you, sorry.
No problem. Okay, all those in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. I do have, before we go into public input, I do have a statement that I have prepared that I would like to read. And this statement, in full transparency, I did consult Bill Mueh with this to make sure that this is perfectly legitimate. Before we start, any public comments set forth on our agenda, I want to indicate that we have a very busy agenda and potentially a lengthy executive session that we need to get to. I know that at least 14 people have signed up to speak on the issue of the mascot and that we only allocated 10 minutes for public comment. I can assure people that we want openness and know the importance of listening to all sides. We will give additional time for people to speak before any action is taken. We want to deal with this appropriately. As a result of our lengthy agenda, I've concluded as chair we need to limit public comment on the mascot issue that is not on the agenda tonight to one minute per person. I would respectfully request that if anybody could comment at a later date, we would greatly appreciate indicating that they will defer to a later date, tentatively set for June 22nd. Okay, so I guess we'll have public comment, and Rob, I'm going to ask you to be our timekeeper. Um, yes.
Hurley, can I ask for a clarification? The June 22nd, is that going to be a special meeting of the board?
Tentatively, yes, Kevin, yeah.
Okay.
That will be a full board meeting tentatively, okay? Because I want to make sure that everyone has an opportunity to speak because at this point, we are tentatively looking at another lengthy executive session in the first meeting in June for a potential other issue. So I'm trying to make sure that I am respectful to everybody's time going forward. Anne?
And for clarity, Hurley, what is the topic of that special meeting?
We will have that special meeting basically discussing the name and mascot issue. Okay, and I just, and for being respectful of everybody's time commitments, that's what I was, I was hoping to do, that people would defer, but they're welcome to speak tonight, but we have to limit the time that people do talk tonight. Okay, having said that, Rob, public comment. We have to make sure that the individuals address the chair, and this is for a public comment that the people would like to make public and realizing that they can defer for tentative meeting of June 22nd, but are certainly allowed to talk tonight, and we will be limiting that to a minute. Okay, who's up?
I have a roster, and my, the first one on my roster is Sandy Reardon. I'll be calling her in right now.
Okay, thank you.
And let's give her a second to show up. Sandy, are you there?
I am.
All right, Sandy, you have one minute, go right ahead.
Okay, hello, thank you for hearing me. I would like to address going back to the Raiders and say that I am not in support of that. And I am looking at the Rattlin City Public Schools District Mission Statement. Bullet number two, under "We Will," says, "Provide a safe and healthy environment that fosters mutual respect." Bullet number three, under "We Will," says, "Address the social and emotional needs of all students." To me, going back to the Raiders does not address those two bullets. And I want to remind people, I am a retired educator, retired teacher, and I want to remind people that we don't know all the social, emotional needs of all our students, but we do know Okay, thank you. And I would just like you all to think on those two bullets and see if you think going back to the Raiders addresses those two bullets.
Thank you, Sandy.
Okay, thank you, Sandy.
Thank you.
Next up, I have Anna Tadio, and she is coming in right now. Anna, are you there?
Can you hear me?
Yes, I can, Anna, please go ahead, you have one minute.
Okay, thank you. I'm going to be reading a letter on behalf of Rights and Democracy, the Rattlin Area NAACP, and the Peace and Justice Center. "We, the undersigned organizations, support the Rattlin City Public Schools Ravens mascot and reject any attempt
Anna, we cannot hear you.
We can't hear you, Anna?
Get closer to your mic, perhaps.
What about now? No?
Did you cover your mic maybe when you put this paper down?
No, no, can you hear me?
I've done that before, so that's
Okay, yes, you can hear me?
Yes, start again.
Okay. "We, the undersigned organizations, support the Rattlin City Public Schools Ravens mascot and reject any attempt to revert back to the district's racist former mascot. We believe that all Vermont children deserve to attend a school district where they can feel safe and supported and where they do not have to deal with the trauma of racist imagery. Mascots like the former Raiders mascot that employ racist imagery, relegate human beings to cartoons and caricatures, and dehumanize their existence have no place in public education. We call on the Rattlin City School Board to move forward in a manner that respects all Rattlin students, faculty, and community members, and to take the next step in transitioning to the new Rattlin mascot. If the Rattlin City School Board decides to revert to the racist mascot, we call on all school districts in Vermont to discontinue interacting with Rattlin City School District for athletics, extracurricular activities, and any other activities. No Vermont student should be subject to this racist imagery. Signed, Rights and Democracy, Rattlin Area NAACP, and the Peace and Justice Center." Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, just a sec. Let's see, hold on. All right, my next, next person up is Samantha Cohen. Got to find, here she is. She is incoming. Samantha, are you there?
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can, go right ahead, you have one minute.
Okay, thank you. I will defer most of my sermon until the designated discussion, but I would just like to say that I do support the Rattlin Ravens, and I wanted to share a recent statement from the Chamber and Economic Development of the Rattlin Region Board. Last month, they unanimously approved a resolution denouncing bias and discrimination and encouraged the school board to work towards a better understanding of systemic racism and diversity and inclusion. And I hope that the school board will follow the chamber's lead and use it, use these tools to guide them in making their decision to keep the Rattlin Ravens. Thank you.
Thank you, Samantha.
Thank you, Samantha. Okay, my next one is Samantha Tupker. Let me just find Samantha Tupker. There she is, incoming. Hi, Samantha, are you there?
I am here, hi, everyone.
Go ahead, you have one minute.
Wait, hi, my name is Sam Tupker, and I'm alumna of RHS, class of 2010. I'm in support of keeping the name change of the Ravens, and I wanted to take time today to speak to three questions that come up frequently from folks in my life who believe the Raider mascot should be reinstated. So first question, I know Native people who say that they aren't offended by the Raider mascot, so why can't we keep it? Indigenous people are not a monolith, and not all take offense to Indigenous mascots. However, Native American leadership across the country, including the National Congress of American Indians, have been opposing these sports mascots for decades. The National Collegiate Athletic Association and Vermont Principals Association have also made statements supporting the replacement of Native American mascots. Question two, can't we keep the Raider name and reclaim the meaning? We can't separate the name and ignore its disrespectful history. We need to acknowledge that keeping this mascot is harmful and move forward with a fresh name and symbol
10 seconds.
that aligns with the values of Rattlin City Schools. Number three, shouldn't the public get a say in this decision? In Vermont, Native communities are the minority. This means that they do not have the numbers to achieve a majority vote in favor of the change. I hope that you all keep this in mind as we move forward with these conversations. Thank you.
Thank you so
Thank you, Sam.
Let me see. And my next person is Catherine, I'm going to say Yavron, let me recall Catherine. Hold on one second. Catherine, are you there? Let's see. Catherine?
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can, just speak up a bit, you have one minute.
"The students of Rattlin have chosen an excellent symbol for their high school mascot. As a spiritual symbol, one could say the Raven signifies death, but that's only half the story. The Raven also symbolizes life, hope, and the providence of God. In the Hebrew scriptures, God sends a raven with food and water to the prophet Elijah in the desert to keep him alive. This theme is carried forward by Jesus in the Gospel when He uses the raven to teach us not to be anxious about tomorrow, but to trust in His Father's provident care. Most of us know the raven as the creature that arrives to clean up the mess left behind by predators, vehicles, and death. European settlers, my ancestors, came to this continent and area and took possession without regard for those who were the guardians and inhabitants of this land. In all honesty, one could say those settlers became Raiders. Our children seem ready and eager to be like ravens, to help clean up the mess and set things right and embrace all people as equals and children of God. Let's not hold them back with the mascot of Raiders.
Catherine, I apologize, your one minute is up.
Thank you.
Thank you, Catherine. Okay.
Hang on one sec. Let's see, my next person is Giovanni Falco, stand by. Here comes Gio. Gio, can you hear me?
I think I can, can you hear me?
Yes, you are on, you have one minute, Gio, go right ahead.
Perfect, so I'm going to defer to the June 22nd meeting. However, I would just briefly like to say, as a student representative at Rattlin High School, I am urging the Rattlin City Public Schools School Board to take the next step in completing and embracing our new district mascot, the Rattlin Ravens. From the beginning of this process, from the beginning, this process has been extremely controversial, divisive, and even political. However, I truly believe that this decision should not be one based on partisan decisions. Unfortunately, we find ourselves in a situation where there's a pro-Raiders and a pro-Raven group, which divides our small town even more. In order for us to make this decision, we need to come together, talk together, work together, and more importantly, listen to each other. So, just briefly, I think that we should come together and work as partners and not enemies.
10 seconds.
Isn't, it is time to retire the Raider name, and I think, actually, I know that the community will do the right thing in the end, thank you.
Thank you, Giovanni.
Let's see, stand by. Have to move. Okay, my next person is Marisa Key Faber. Standby, I will be promoting Marisa in a moment. Here she comes. Marisa, can you hear me? Are you there, Marisa?
I'm here, can you hear me?
Excellent, we can hear you, you have one minute, go right ahead.
Thank you. So recently, the Board of Aldermen here in Rattlin voted unanimously to adopt a declaration of inclusion that condemns racism and discrimination of any type and welcomes all persons regardless of race, color, religion, national origin, sex, gender, gender identity, sexual orientation, age, or disability. The Chamber and Economic Development also recently voted unanimously to launch an effort combating systemic racism in the local community. These declarations seem to align well with the Rattlin City Public Schools Mission Statement that Sandy mentioned earlier, that says, "In partnership with students, parents, and community, Rattlin High School offers diverse learning opportunities and strives to meet the academic, social, physical, and emotional needs of all its students. We provide a safe, orderly, healthy environment that is conducive to teaching and learning and a school climate that values respect and dignity. I urge you to use your power as a school board commissioner to continue to make our home a welcoming place for all students and community members. This directly correlates with the current discussions about Ravens and Raiders. Please make a decision that supports our city's
Sorry, your time is up.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Marisa. Let's see, I just have to make an adjustment here. Oh, there she is. All right, my next speaker is Amelia McCullough. And she is incoming. Amelia, are you there?
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can, you have one minute, go right ahead.
All right, thank you. My name is Amelia, and I'm a homeschool student taking classes at Rattlin High School in Stafford. I'm a member of the Student Mascot Advisory Committee, where I worked alongside my peers to survey the community and current student body to find the best possible mascot. We spent more than a month, conducted four surveys, and engaged in in-depth analysis of each possible mascot name suggested by Rattlin community members. After all this work, we sent out one final Google form, and the students at RHS, RMS, and RIS chose the Rattlin Ravens. It is understandable that students have bristled at restoring the Raiders. The idea that all that hard work was for nothing and that the Raiders would be brought back is disheartening and discouraging. Eliminating the Raiders was the right choice, given the obvious issues with racial history and cultural appropriation. I ask any school board member who still supports the Raiders, are you comfortable taking the Rattlin Ravens away when it was the students themselves who chose it? And if so, are you willing to admit that you are no longer serving the best interests of the students, but your own selfish interest? I call on all members of the Rattlin City Board of
Thank you, thank you, Amelia.
All right, let's see. Let me make sure.
Anne, you have a question?
Rob, I chatted you on something. Allison got moved somewhere.
Oh, no. Let's check it out.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Anne, I didn't, I'm sorry, Allison, I didn't see, where did she go to?
She's coming back, I apologize, she must have gotten caught in my furious clicking.
I'm sorry, Allison.
Allison, that was all my fault, I probably accidentally
Everything, I was just an attendee, so I couldn't say anything.
I'm so sorry.
That's all right, no worries.
All right, my next speaker is, I'm going to say Xavier Legar or Legar, and maybe he can, or she can tell me how to pronounce that correctly when they come in. Standby. All right, here comes Xavier. Xavier, are you there?
Yep, can you hear me?
I can, how do you say your last name?
Well, it's Legere Guest.
Legere Guest, welcome, you're on.
Thanks, so I'm a former RHS alumni from 2010, and I'm actually currently in Canada, I'm a dual citizen, and I had, I got the opportunity to work at this department in Canada that deals with Indigenous issues. And in fact, Canada's history, which is very tied into the whole North American experience, is one of, unfortunately, cultural genocide and a ton of prejudice and, and harm. But overwhelmingly, from what, from what I've heard in my research, is the duty for reconciliation, and that begins with, with listening and understanding. And overwhelmingly, as I think Sam Tupker put it, the National Congress of American, of American natives and over 100 tribes have repudiated the use of imagery and mascots that bear their likeness. So I think this is the right step for Rattlin to go with the Ravens.
Thank you, thank you so much.
Thank you, Xavier.
All right, let's see. Okay, and then my next speaker is Jake Pluta. He'll be incoming momentarily.
Where's Jake? There he is.
Jake, are you there?
Hello, Jake.
Yes, I'm here, thank you.
You have a minute.
Yeah, thanks, I completely appreciate your long agenda and your executive session, so I'm going to defer my comment to June 22nd.
Okay, thank you, Jake.
Thanks very much. Let's see, our next speaker is Erin Epps. Erin is incoming. Erin, are you there? There you are.
Yes, I am, thank you, Mr. Chair and Board for the opportunity.
Hi, Erin.
Thank you. So I'd like to express my gratitude first to the Board Chair and nearly every member of the Board for stating their commitment to ongoing education and curriculum that elevate Native, specifically Abenaki, voices in order to seek greater understanding of diverse cultures and perspectives. And in the spirit of elevating an issue that impacts many Native nations across the country, I'd like to acknowledge the crisis of missing and murdered Indigenous women, or MMIW, and the role that public education plays in reaching a solution. And so for those unfamiliar with the MMIW crisis, May 5th last week was designated as an awareness day for that, and these three facts are really all you need to know about that crisis. One, Indigenous women are 10 times more likely to be murdered than the national average. Two, homicide is the third leading cause of death for Native women aged 10 to 24. And three, the majority of violence is committed by white perpetrators. And why has it taken so long for us to recognize this? A major reason is the lack of representation of Native voices and stories that we encounter in our everyday lives unless we actively seek them out, so
Erin, your time is up.
Starts in the classroom, thank you.
Thank you so
Thank you, Erin.
Standby. Let's see. My next speaker is Madison Aiken. And she'll be incoming momentarily. All right, here she comes.
Hi, Madison.
Madison, are you there?
Beginner mistake, I was muted.
There you are, you have one minute, go right ahead.
I'm disappointed that engaged community members had their time cut in half with no time to prepare for shorter statement. My comment was going to be about, is about the fact that this debate is a gift to our community. People are engaging, voting, protesting, marching, making signs, talking, researching, and reading. This is what an educational organization is set up to do. We're talking about cultural appropriation, representation, identity, healthy white identity, equity, land acknowledgements, history, marginalization, racism, and advocacy. Adults, board members, educators, students are all practicing the skills of social engagement. If some of us are doing this work in a quality way, moving the conversation forward, some people are yelling, being mean or cruel, holding grudges, and trying to fight, but that's the process. But now's the time for the adults to be people that students will admire. People who are uncomfortable with this conversation need to realize that social justice work is the work of love, forgiveness, and redemption. I hope that we engage in this work, move forward towards the Ravens as an equitable and inclusive mascot.
Thank you so much, Madison. All right, let's see, I have one more speaker coming up in a second, and that will be Jenna Montgomery. Here we go, let's see. Ah, here she comes. Yep, incoming.
Good evening, Jenna.
Hi, thank you. Due to the, like, for the sake of time and due to the fact that it seems like a lot of the commissioners aren't really paying attention to the meeting, I'm going to defer the next one, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Jenna. Is that it, Rob?
That are all, those are all the speakers we had tonight, thank you very much.
All right, and I am remiss because I did not ask them to state where they were from. I will just quickly go down the list of where our speakers were from in the order that they spoke. Rattlin, Rattlin, California, Essex, Vermont, Ludlow, Ira, Rattlin, Rattlin, Ottawa, Mendon, Rattlin, West Rattlin, and Rattlin. And I encourage everybody to pay attention to the meeting tentatively set for the 22nd. I want to make sure all board members can be in attendance before I finalize that meeting. And I think we are at, anybody, I think we're at student representative report. Who wants to go first?
I can start.
Okay, thank you, Hannah.
So at RIS, we have finished up with most of our S-Back testing. Fifth grade will finish up taking the science portion of the test this week. We have started a new after-school drama club for students in grades four through eight. This is in partnership with the Rattlin Rec Department and Rattlin Youth Theater. We had a number of students in music composition write music that was played by members of the Vermont Symphony Orchestra and shown virtually for the school to watch. The mural is complete on the Grove Street side of our complex. If you haven't had the opportunity to see it yet, be sure to do so. At Northeast, kindergarten students celebrated Arbor Day last Friday during a tree planting ceremony with guests of honor. during a tree planting ceremony with guests of honor, Rutland City Arborists, Stafford Technical Center Forestry Students, and Assistant Superintendent Bliss. Northeast is happy to welcome back many of our foster grandparents. We have missed all of them, and we are so happy that our state COVID guidelines have allowed us to have volunteers back in our building. Northeast School has an opening for a part-time recess and lunch aid daily from 11 to 2. This is a nice position for someone who loves working with children while at play outdoors. If interested in hearing more about this, please call Principal Ingles at Northeast School. Northwest students were on WCAX's Evening News, while RHS alum Olivia Lyons, news reporter, met with children and staff to talk about outdoor learning opportunities that occurred throughout this pandemic. Kindness was a theme at Northwest throughout the month of April and into May, with children and families taking part in various kindness challenges at school and at home. A great big thank you to all of our extraordinary teachers and staff at Northeast, Northwest, and RIS, and all of Rutland City Public Schools, as we celebrated Teacher Appreciation Week and School Nurse Appreciation Day. We don't know what we would have done without the perseverance and determination of our faculty and staff to educate our students and keep them safe throughout this unprecedented school year. Thank you.
Hey, Hurley. I apologize, I missed Rachel Black. She was on my list, and I skipped right over her. Can we allow her to speak?
Uh, yeah, one minute, yep.
Thank you. Hang on, Rachel, I'm hoping you're still there. I will promote you. I am so sorry, I stepped right over you. Let's see. Here she comes. Hi, Rachel.
Can you hear me?
Yeah, Rachel, I'm so sorry, that was my fault entirely.
That's okay, Rob, I appreciate you getting me back in. Um, I think you are familiar with me. I'm an alumni from the class of 2009, and I've been very involved in the mascot conversations and happenings on the Board. In the forum earlier this fall dedicated to the mascot, I highlighted some of my experiences as a student of color in a school and community where very few people look like you. Just like many of you, I've heard from many other students of color who shared similar stories. And with that said, I was very alarmed by statements made by Tricia O'Connor in the last meeting following the presentation about DEI and restorative justice measures being taken in Rutland City Public Schools. I think with that comment and other comments being made by the Board, it's clear that the Board needs to some DEI training. They need to look inward and see where their prejudices lay. Because of, just because you as white leaders or your white children who are students in Rutland City Public Schools do not experience racism does not mean racism does not exist. By increasing our DEI and restorative justice measures, we are only helping our whole community. And I'd really like to thank the middle school for their wonderful presentation last meeting and the actions they are taking. And I hope the other schools within Rutland City Public Schools and their leadership follow this wonderful, inclusive, and modern example.
Time is up.
Hey, thank you, Rachel.
Thank you, Rachel.
I think we, Isabella, you're up.
Hi, thank you. I'd just like to apologize for any noise in the background. I am working with Rutland New Theater right now, so it might be a little noisy. A lot's happening at RMS, but I wanted to report on a specific event that happened that kind of embraced an opportunity for active learning. Last week, one of our students brought a Carolina Reaper hot pepper into school. Two of his peers each ate half of the pepper. As you might imagine, these two students physically reacted to the pepper negatively. The students who brought in the pepper received a consequence from administration. We thought the situation was closed. However, upon further reflection, social studies teacher Rob LeBate raised the question, was this student really guilty? He saw this as an amazing, relevant, and engaging learning opportunity for the students. So he set aside his lesson plan for the day and organized a mock trial for the accused student. The trial included a judge and jury, plaintiff and defense attorneys, expert witnesses, and eyewitnesses. Students progressed through the trial with Mr. LeBate guiding them through the court proceedings, interjecting teaching of judicial systems as the work through the, as they worked through the trial. Interestingly, in the process, the court learned that there was a middle person, per se, who took the pepper from the defendant and gave it to the student who ingested it. In conclusion, the defendant was found innocent. We appreciate Mr. LeBate and every teacher and staff at middle, at the middle school for creating an engaging and inspirational teaching and learning opportunity for every student, every day. For the high school, fine arts are booming at Rutland High School. New COVID guidelines are allowing for band choir and theater to take place. The Rutland Band will be having a virtual concert on June 14th at 4:00 PM. Encore will be doing a show called The Just So Stories, adapted by Joseph Robinette. Did you ever wonder how the camel got his hump or the elephant got his trunk? Rudyard Kipling wondered too, and The Just So Stories answer these questions and more. This will be the first live performance for our school in 2020, 2021 school year. So the performances are May 14th and May 15th at 6:30. Donations are greatly accepted, and it's a perfect family show. The space is limited, though, so you can reserve seats by calling 770-1134. A graduation ceremony is being organized for this year's departing seniors. June 17th or 18th, weather-dependent, are the days to look out for. More information will be coming to students, and they should be checking their emails. College Ward AP testing has started this week, and many Rutland students are working very hard to prepare. Thank you to all of our wonderful AP teachers assisting them in this different process. Sports are still up and running, and congratulations to the tennis team for having an extra-great season with lots of wins. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Isabella. Brittany?
Isabella, just a question. You said that the school was having a concert, the high school. Are we doing that inside?
It is an inside event, but only the students are allowed inside, and the rest will be virtual for the people watching, yeah.
Awesome, thank you.
I apologize to Hannah. Are there any questions of our two student reps before we move on? Okay, thank you very much, Hannah and Isabella. Update on the annual audit report, Ted.
Thank, thank you very much, everybody. Just a few brief comments about the progress of our annual audit. The district financial statements are once again being audited by the firm of O'Brien, Shortal, Reynolds, and Sabotka. The partner in charge is again Jim Reynolds. He and his team are very familiar with the district's financials, our business accounting team and processes, and they typically offer a number of beneficial recommendations. So we're pleased to have them engaged again this year. The audit examination and field work began in earnest in February, and we are expecting that it will be completed this month. The auditors report, and then the audited certified financial statements will be completed next month in June. Those certified financials are required to be submitted to the State of Vermont and federal regulatory authorities by June 30th, and we're on track to meet that deadline. Main message here also is I just want to convey that at this time, we are not aware of any significant or new control issues. The auditors might mention in this coming report that during the spring of 2020, when operations were interrupted by COVID, a number of standard accounting reconciliations fell behind schedule. However, as of the end of calendar 2020, those were all caught up and in good standing. There were no issues found upon those reconciliations. We are also going to keep the newly formed Finance Committee apprised in the coming weeks. Last year, with the committee being in place, we initiated a great process whereby, once the audit is completed, the partner in charge directly addresses the Finance Committee with no intermediary from district administration, so that Finance Committee members and ultimately Board members, if you so choose, can hear the auditor's own words and ask any questions directly. So we'll be continuing that again this year. I think that's all I had to mention, unless there are any questions.
Okay, thank you very much, Ted. Be, anybody have questions of Ted? Okay, before we hear the Allen Street report, I just wanted to give a brief update. The Building Committee has been watching a water pipe up there that has been having a slow leak, and it now has failed us. So we will be hearing more about that in the Building Committee section. But I just wanted to start off with that. And where is Scott?
Hello, everyone. I'm Scott Corbett, Director of Allen Street Campus. I'd like to take the opportunity to thank the Board, the administrators, and my supportive team for all the work that we've done this year. Are we presenting? I'm not presenting, right?
So hey, Scott, I can, you want me to share your presentation?
If you could, Rob, I'd appreciate that.
Yep. There you go, you should be able to see that.
Thank you. We can go to the next slide, please.
Okay.
Coming to this area was was definitely a different experience for me. I've never been somewhere where people didn't want me to be here. I heard the term blank flatlander many times. My students were angry, and I really listened to them. I took some time to really got to hear why they were upset. And it was really like a lack of access, a lack of access to their own community and their own neighborhoods. We live in a community where we have two highways that drive that can actually split us. And those highways, people come by with skis on their cars and $50,000 worth of bikes in the back of pickup trucks. And my students sit there and watch this happen daily, and they don't get to have the same type of fun. One of the things we really try to do is to get them out there and to learn about their backyard. Rob, please, next, please. Some of the goals at Allen Street are to contribute, build a culture of positive health, build resilience and empathy in our students, provide opportunities for them to have smiles on their faces, and reduce the stigma that this building has. Next slide, please. I'm trying to speed up, because we have shortened time. Rob, can you? Are you presenting that, Rob, or is it in present mode?
Yeah, I can do, I can definitely-
Thanks.
There you go.
Thank you. So really, to try to get, like I said, kids out of our, out of their comfort zone, we use that through skiing, mountain biking, rock climbing, and just hikes along the long trail, as well as many things that are on community like Pine Hill Park. We really try to foster fun in our students and really build them a positive culture of mental health. Next slide, please, Rob. One of the things that we did this year that the Building Committee was already aware of was put in a disc golf course. This was on the plans before COVID, so it really led into that very nicely, where kids were able to socially distance and still be able to have fun out on our, on our property. This is available to the community after hours, and we will have loaned your disc for families and community members so they can play on our course. Next slide, please. This is a short video about a pump track, so you can kind of get an idea. This is ours currently. The main purpose of this track is really to give my students an opportunity to build strength, resilience, and have a fun outlet during the school day, and also to motivate and engage kids to come into school. This is another opportunity for community members to be able to come to our space after hours and be able to practice in a controlled, safe, healthy environment. This was supported by multiple partners, and you'll learn about that in the next video. Rob, next slide, please.
I might have to, I might have to stop and reshare this to get sound, so I'm sorry. Let me just do this again. Okay. See if we can do it.
Allen Street Campus is a five-to-twelve hands-on Rutland City Public School academic program. Send to push boundaries, embrace a growth mindset, build healthy relationships within our building and larger community. Highly-trained teachers, counselors, paraeducators, outside organizations all collaborate to achieve academic and social successes in a therapeutic environment. Many people visit our area from all over the country to experience and take advantage of all that Vermont offers. Sadly, many Vermonters never have that same opportunity to experience what's in their own state. Scott believes in exploring and providing access to our backyard, as he likes to call it. Allen Street Campus was selected, along with UVM, to be the official germplasm conservation orchards in Vermont. With support of the foundation, we plant, protect, and feed seedlings, creating an orchard that pollen will be harvested from down the road. Hands-on learning can be a form of experiential learning, but does not necessarily involve students reflecting on their product. We reflect daily, and hands-on learning helps keep us interested in school. The director poses yearly challenges to all. Last year, reducing discipline and building connections were our two goals. I'm happy to report that we accomplished our challenges even before heading home to remote instruction.
Let's see, seven times two is fourteen. Okay, sixteen minus fourteen is two, drop down to nine, twenty-nine. Was seven going to twenty-nine?
No.
Nope, all right.
We thought this year to be different because of that little COVID-19 thing, but we should have known better. Challengers are dropped in September because status quo is not okay. The 2021 challenge was set to put smiles on faces, even if it's under a mask, build mental and physical health, and achieve academic goals through increased experiential learning. As you can see, we are meeting those expectations and ready for what's coming next. Our next big project is erecting the High Tunnel with community partners and volunteers. As stewards of our land, we always leave it better than when we found it, packing in and even packing out what others accidentally left behind. Rutland has some awesome parks and recreation facilities right in the city. Weekly, we spread our wings and venture off campus to explore and access our backyard. Might spot us biking at Pine Hill Park, exploring Buttermilk Falls, flying kites at Palmazin, skiing the trees at Pyco, or dropping in at Killington. We are lucky to be surrounded by amazing places. We have access to healthy activities as part of our day. These activities are selected to build focus, strength, endurance, and resilience, all while having fun. Pump Track was able to take shape with grants and in-kind donations from the Vermont Principals Association, Rutland Rotary South, 802 Quits, Carpenter and Coston, Gagnon Lumber, and Powderhorn Trail Company. Community members will have limited access to the track, creating a controlled third space. The goals of the Pump Track are to build resilience, strengthen our bodies, build mental focus, and put huge smiles on our face to support positive mental health. We would like to thank the School Board Administration, Allen Street, campus staff, our guardians, local organizations, community members for the support we provide. We will make you proud.
Next slide, please, Rob. So you can see, we've been up to a little bit at Allen Street Campus over the last two years. The nice thing, I gotta be honest, is that COVID never slowed us down, our learning. I have very little regression for the students at attendance school. And I just want to share what the vision is for the future. I hope you enjoyed that video. But we'd like to procure grants to get a food truck or a farm stand to put on Allen Street. We like to grow organic produce and then take that and be able to use it in our new kitchen with the goal of providing healthy meals to our community. It's also important for us to produce rich, nutrient-dense food for our students so they have ability to learn and hopefully build healthy bodies for the future. That's all I have. Next slide, Rob. So the video was better than me, so I figured I shouldn't talk much today. So I hope you guys enjoyed that, and if there's any questions, I'm available.
Dad, you're muted.
Thank you very much for that wonderful presentation. Lots of hands are up. I think it was an awesome job. And you, up there, everyone seems to be doing wonderful work. And I saw Kevin's hands first, and then Brittany, and we'll go from there. Kevin?
So, Scott, I'm really impressed with the stuff that you've accomplished. This is really, really great. So there's the pump track, there's a, there's a disc golf course. Is that on the school grounds there?
Correct, that's on the school grounds, and we will be erecting a High Tunnel, probably early summer, late fall this year, which is already on site, ready to be installed.
The High Tunnel is, is for growing vegetables?
Correct. That was, that was supported through tobacco- Correct. Um, that was, and that was supported through tobacco reduction grants through the district, so.
Great. Great work. I mean, it's obvious the kids are really excited about it, too.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hey, thank you. Brittany?
Uh, first of all, Scott, thank the student that narrated that. That was awesome. So that's, that's wonderful. I was actually speaking earlier with Mr. Olson about the awesome relationship between the Peer Point Learning, those younger kids with, with your older kids. And I was blown away at the level of of respect for both programs. Uh, when I was speaking with Jessica, you're doing a fantastic job up there. And how the little guys that I was speaking to when I did my tour were looking forward to going to your, to your new, new bike trail, bike path. So it speaks volumes that they, you know, they, they want to reach for that and they're excited about those programs. So I hope that as you guys continue, and I know you're working together on some projects, but I'm really looking forward to see how that relationship grows so that they do feel comfortable, you know, transitioning if they have to transition from that school into yours. So thank you for everything you're doing. It's fantastic.
Thank you.
And I'm bringing extra bikes, actually. I hear you need bikes and the little guys need bikes.
Need me some BM. I got bikes, though. We got some bikes.
Oh, you have bikes. Okay.
Dina? Go ahead, Dina.
Yes, thank you. That was a great presentation. And I, I really like the approach of building on the grounds and sharing that with the community and, and kind of breaking that barrier between Allen Street and the community. And reducing that perception of Allen Street that has been in our community for a while. So that's a pretty impressive move. I wa, I have a question based on the video because I, I heard the brilliant narrator that I think I'm going to hire. I think he's like brilliant. He, the, the, there was mentioning of our goals this year were to reduce discipline, disciplinary action and something else. Could you speak?
That was the goal. That was goal last year, correct.
Could you tell us a little bit of what that goal meant? Like what, what have you seen? Have you seen a reduction in?
We, we saw a 70% reduction in behavior before COVID. Honestly, very impressive. I didn't think that was even possible. My staff did an amazing job. They are hands-on. They get dirty with these kids. And the reality is they're engaging them. All people want to learn. It's just you have to figure out how to engage them, how to connect with them. Um, and I've seen it. I've already had three kids sign back up to school after they've dropped out pre, previously don't want to come back. So that's the kind of stuff that, you know, really tells me that we're moving in the right direction as a community. We're engaging our students. We're building third spaces that are safe for, for our kids. So I, I think, I think we're definitely moving in the right direction here, not just for Allen Street Campus, but I think also for the whole entire community, getting them access to, to fun, healthy activities versus, you know, the alternative, which is possibly using drugs, so.
So you had three kids return to general, the, the high school?
We have one student that's returned to the high school. We've had kids that have dropped out of school and have recently signed back into school, wanting to come back to school because some of the changes they've seen here at Allen Street and just, I think, maturity as well.
That's great. Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
All right. Um, I saw Tricia and Charlene. So Tricia?
I actually had raised my hand on the screen, but apparently that wasn't visible, so I'll stick to that from now on. Um, I did want to say that I truly enjoyed the fellow narrating. He was absolutely precious. Love that. Um, he did a very good job. So I think he might have a role in like media down the road, maybe tell him that. Um, but I, I enjoy the fact that you guys are exposing these children to experiences. I highly agree with that. I, I do know in my own run-ins with, with different children that it's amazing when they come from homes that may be your challenge that they don't know that this stuff out there actually exists. And that it gives them something to look forward to in, in if they don't pursue perhaps it on their own at present, when they get older, they will look back on that longly and maybe return to that. Um, I'm wondering if you guys actually have taken from doing the dirt track over at the campus and actually going to Pine Hill because I feel, um, I've seen the bus here numerous times and I'm just curious if once they, they, you know, master that and are safe, do you go to Pine Hill Park?
We actually go to Killington and do downhill. So part of this is really training the students on campus to build those skills and core strength to be able to take advantage of Pine Hill Park or our pump track. But the goal is to be able to ride downhill. Um, we've had kids out there in that one picture was a fifth grader, you know, going off a pretty big drop. I have a young man that has potential to professionally ride a bike, I believe. And the man that did narrate that, he could totally be a professional. I let, you could not believe how fast that was. I was like, I was blown away. I was like, it's gonna take me three hours to do this. He was done in 45 minutes with a smile on his face. So, um, I actually left him like, I was like, you got this. I'll be right back. And he came back and he laid one down perfect. He's like, God, Scott, it was really interesting to watch the video afterwards. He definitely has a future in that.
Yeah.
I get, I get commissioned, Dina, though. You hear me? 10%.
Thank you.
Charlene?
Yes, I wa, I just wanted to say the video was great. And I also wanted to say quickly that I echo the sentiments of the other commissioners that Scott, I think what a great job you and your, your staff are doing and, and it's really appreciated. And I know it's probably, I, I'm sure it's very hard work and I, I just want you to know that we really appreciate you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hey, thank you. Anybody else? Okay, hearing none. We'll be going on to the superintendent's report.
Thanks, Hurley. Uh, thank you, Scott, too. And Pam Reed was gonna do our intro. Pam, thanks, thanks for that.
Scott doesn't need me.
I, I too will try, try to be quick, but I, I do want to repeat what Hannah had said earlier about thanking our teachers and our nurses. And we've had, again, we, we, I keep on saying this, but we've had a great year this year despite the challenges and it's it's really due to everybody pulling together. Everybody's, everybody's helped to try to make this a, a strong year for the district, including the board. But, uh, thank you especially with, given the, the week and the the not, the notoriety that this celebration has given it to the teachers and to the nurses. They've, they've been key instruments in trying to make sure our kids get what they need this year. So just, just a quick update about the pandemic. Every, every week I get a, um, meeting from the commissioner of, or sorry, from Secretary of Ed. And they give us the kind of the COVID update, what, what it's looking like from the stats. And the stats are saying that it has been declining in the, in the state over the last couple of weeks, especially over the last few days. And they project that we'll see a, a pretty significant decline going into, declining cases going into June, into July. So that trend is happening. However, we just dealt with some cases today. So I, I think we just have to be aware as a community that it's still out there. We're trying to be cautious and I would say personally that please folks get vaccinated. And that's one of the big strategies that we need for folks to be able to do to make sure that, um, we kind of get back to some semblance of normalcy. Speaking of vaccination, the Agency of Education, Department of Health contacted, contacted us this week to say, would you like to host a vaccination clinic at Rotten High School? And so we said, yes, please. And that is going to happen next week. We really have the details haven't been given out to parents yet, but it will be March 17th to March 18th. Anyway, we know that and it's going to be, be conducted by the Rotten Regional Medical Center. It's going to be open to both students and parents. And the age range now for vaccination is 12 to 15 years old as well. That, that group has been included in the vaccination category. So, uh, we will have more information coming out when we have, um, our information coming from Department of Health and we'll try to be clear on what that opportunity is. I know sometimes we get these things very quickly and we try to pull them together with their help. And, um, that's one of, this is one of those situations. Uh, end of the year ceremonies for us. I think Isabel had, had mentioned graduation. Agency of Education is allowing for in-person graduations this year with some restrictions. So the high school team is working on that. They, they're putting together the details. I, this, we don't have all the details yet because they're trying to make sure they're, they've got a good plan together, but we will have a graduation ceremony on Alumni Field outside, just like the old days. And the date will be, uh, we're planning for June 17th, but we'll have some rain dates as well. And the team is also planning some other opportunities for seniors for, for celebrations. That's the motion that you, that you made to help us out with that. So more specifics will come on that, but we'll make sure that we're following all the safety guidelines that we have to follow. Um, I've mentioned in the past recovery planning. Rob Bliss has been leading that with the principals and we are in, in that process. Um, you've heard from the, from us and from the media that we are going to be the recipient of some significant funds coming from the federal government to address the, the effects of the pandemic on schools. We also were fortunate last week to host Senator Bernie Sanders, who came to visit and talked to us about our plans and what we hope to do and what he hopes for us to do, too. He wants to make sure that everyone's taken care of with the, the use of these federal funds. So we thank Senator Sanders for visiting. Just a reminder, our focus with these funds has to be on three categories. We have to focus on academic success of our students, re-engagement in school of our students who might have been disengaged or slightly disengaged, or even trying to get people even more engaged, like some of the examples that Scott was talking about. And also focusing on student social, emotional wellbeing and mental health. So that's the three things that we have to fit, fit these funds into. We had to, like I said, Rob, put together a a needs assessment with the, with the principals. And now we're, next step for us is to make a preliminary plan of how we're going to use those funds in the short term, specifically the summer, and then for the long term over the next few years. We have these funds until 2024. That plan was accepted, our needs assessment. And now we have to make a more specific plan that is due to the AOE by June 1st. So that is being worked on by our administration and trying to put that together. We'll be reporting that to the board on that, uh, next meeting if, if you are willing to hear us. Make sure we, we get permission to put that on the agenda. We'd like to tell you about what we're gonna do. Um, so that's, that's, that's it for superintendent's report. And I know Hurley, you wanted to talk about the Allen Street fix with, with building committee. So we're, we're ready to go there next if you're ready.
Okay, yeah. Why don't we, uh, switch that order around and do building first and, uh, Bill or Ted or Scott, Aaron, who want to address the water issue?
Uh, if I could just give an intro, like Ted and, Ted and Ted Plamentis and Glenn Scott, they've been, they've been working on this for the past couple of days. Um, and I know Glenn had advised the building committee, um, I think that was April 27th, that we had a plumbing issue in the building that would need to be addressed over the next couple of months. And then we found out over the weekend that we need to address it because a leak had developed in one of, one of those pipes. So, um, we asked Scott to switch the school to remote learning for the week so we could, so we could deal with that. The water had to be turned off and we want to thank Scott and the staff and the students and their families for the flexibility that they've exhibited. They had a, a great, um, couple of days trying to work through what they had to do. And I think attendance was really good. So thanks, thanks to ASC, but, uh, Glenn and Scott are gonna give us an update about the issue and then the financing for it.
Thanks, Joe. Uh, good evening, everyone. Um, as Hurley had shared and, and Bill, we'd reported this in the building committee on April 27th. Uh, there's a domestic water line. We discovered in the process of our, my building inspections that, uh, had some deterioration. Uh, it was caused by some water that was coming in from above from a, a pipe and probably the salt water from road salt was, was in contact with that over a, a couple of decades or more. So when seeing this, I began gathering proposals, um, and then also being vigilant of it, you know, kind of on a daily basis, keeping an eye on it. Uh, I was in the building on Saturday just doing a, a random check, um, and it was showing signs of leaking. So to prevent a major and potentially catastrophic issue, we shut the water down. I notified Bill and Scott and, uh, and as they shared, they planned remote learning. Uh, we were able to get an excavator lined up and a plumber lined up who started the work, um, today. Uh, so the hole has been dug, uh, and a plumber began their initial assessment and, and repairs. They have the parts on order. They're gonna start uh, the repair tomorrow officially. And hopefully we'll have the water turned back on by Friday. Um, maybe, maybe as early as Thursday. Um, but we're just gonna, we're not gonna rush it. We want to make sure it's done right. Uh, and get that work done. So hopefully, uh, well, not hopefully, we're gonna have school reopened by Monday for Scott and, and all their good, uh, teachers and students over there.
Thank you. I just wanted to comment that we still will be, uh, meeting for outdoor adventure. So the students will slowly get that experience this week. So my staff is able to arrange it. Thank you.
Okay, Ted or Aaron?
Aaron, would you like to go first?
Um, no, I think it's in great hands with what you're doing, but you can speak to the financial portion.
Well, it certainly is in great hands and, and we appreciate that. In terms of the financial, the current estimate for the excavation and the plumbing is in the $25,000 range. We have made sure that because this is an emergency repair, we're not subject to the normal protocol of being required to get three bids. Glenn is very comfortable with the vendors involved, so, uh, we're going with that and they're doing great work so far. Our proposal, uh, for consideration by the finance committee, and I just literally only a few hours ago sent an email to Charlene. So Charlene, I apologize for the late notice, but we thought we'd take this opportunity to suggest to everyone that if we're thinking about asking for, uh, endorsement to use, uh, a draw off of the annual contingency fund for this $25,000, this would be the first use of any contingency funds this year because obviously we try and be very conservative and restrictive, limiting that use to emergency or critical situations. We probably could find money elsewhere, but it would be in lots of different pieces. And so administratively, uh, we'd like to just draw as necessary, probably no more than $25,000 or $30,000 out of our $250,000 annual contingency fund. And, uh, and of course, we wouldn't take any more out of it than the actual cost. So, um, that's the proposal. Some of you have an email documenting that and obviously, um, if anybody has concerns about, uh, using the contingency fund, we can find, we can find some unused funds in different pots elsewhere. So we offer that for your consideration and be glad to answer any questions now or later at your convenience. Thank you.
Allison?
Is, does the timing of the contingency fund matter? I mean, can you wait another month till the board? If they were gonna talk about it at finance and then bring it up before the full board? It's nothing you need to know.
Probably in that situation, Allison, in order to get, um, I assume we're gonna get the invoice within a few weeks and you know, we'd want to get that paid by June 30 to be in the current fiscal year. But yes, I mean, if, if, uh, the board or the finance committee would like to discuss that next month, we can certainly, uh, we can certainly find ways of funding that will allow that consideration time. And I'm gonna go on that assumption. We're not gonna make any draw off of the contingency fund until authorized to do so. So I hope that answers your question.
Well, I guess my question is, do you, would it make your life easier if the board acted on it tonight versus delaying it a month from now?
Not, not much. So I can wait.
Mr. Bliss?
Yeah, I just, you know, Glenn and, Glenn and Ted brought to my attention that they, uh, Vermont Agency of Education has an emergency uh, fund that you can draw upon after the fact. So one of the things that, that we've all been doing is looking at this as a very real emergency for the school district. And so we would have to pay and document everything we've done. And then we can submit to the Agency of Education or the expenses that we've incurred in this emergency with hopes that basically the, the state would fund the entire project. And we would be, uh, just fronting the money until we get that process done.
Thank you for adding that, Rob. Appreciate it.
All right, Charlene?
And what's the likelihood of that, Rob, or Ted? Is that, is that a likely scenario?
I, no.
I, I'm not so sure either. I would say, given this, given this situation, I would say it qualifies as an emergency because we had to shut down the school due to the water loss. Um, so I would, but I haven't had to make such an application before. So I would say I'm hopeful.
Yeah. And the fact that, the fact that Glenn consulted with the City Department of Public Works and DPW recommended that, uh, the water supply be shut down. You know, I think that provides a lot of support for a case to at least get partial reimbursement. So the important point there is we're gonna pursue every avenue to recoup whatever dollars are, we're eligible for.
Okay. Other questions or comments?
Thank you, everyone.
Okay, thank you. Staff, oh, building committee report. Anything else, Aaron?
Now Bill Olson put his hand up though.
Okay, Mr. Olson.
So if you're good with building, I'm sorry, I forgot one more thing I I should have mentioned back at superintendent's report, if I can just squeeze that in. Yes. We I wanted to make sure folks realize that we're we're planning next fall not to have remote learning for K through six. And the agency of education is saying the same thing, that they don't expect that that will be the case. Whether we do that in some at some level for the upper grades, seven through 12, it would be more geared toward looking for ways to help kids who might not be engaged in some way, and this might be an option for them. But that that will depend be dependent on staffing and and how we can manage doing something like that. It wouldn't really be COVID related. So our goal next year is to be back full time in person. And this AOE is planning on giving us guidance on what the fall is going to look like, I think in about a month. They're not they're not committing to anything yet because I think they're just trying to to judge this the state of the virus and how it's how it's going to progress. But our intention is to be back full time in person.
Okay, thank you, Bill. Staff relations. Anything updated in public session?
No, we will update in executive session.
Okay, thank you, Dana. Old and new business, the weighted study coalition, Allison, Ted, who's going to talk about that?
Allison, you want to start?
Sure, yeah, I I know briefly, I don't know if you were able to keep up with the emails today, Ted. I know I saw about 20 and read about two lines. So I believe the S13 passed out of house ways and means and is now on its next leg of the journey while it's not as strong as we'd wish in terms of implementing the waiting study results. It is a step in the right direction in creating a committee to review the implementation.
Yes, and to that, if I might add, so as Allison said, it was actually voted unanimously out of house ways and means today, which was excellent. It did. It did include a provision. Some people were concerned about what's called an excess spending threshold. I won't go into those mechanics, but it did provide some relief for those districts who were concerned about that threshold in fiscal 22 and 23. Let's see, the other thing that I might mention is that it goes next to the House Appropriations Committee, where they're going to discuss how much money to allow for a consultant that might be engaged along with the task force. And it is possible, according to the lobbyist who is working with the coalition, she indicated that it's possible that the full house early next week, perhaps as early as Tuesday, might might look at voting on on approving this action. And we're hopeful that the task force composition, which will include members from various House and Senate committees, will provide a balance of perspective and will hopefully have a have a good focus coming out of the legislation. So this is very positive, actually.
Okay. Thank you, Ted.
Thank you.
Before we go on to old and new business, finish in old and new business, I have with consulting with our attorney have I'd like to read a statement and a memo I will be sending out to the board. Opening statement about the ad hoc committee that I am appointing tonight. I've decided that the board would be well served by having an ad hoc committee appointed to report to report on events and consequences of the mascot change. As president of the school board, I have the authority. I believe that this committee is necessary so we can act reasonably and responsibly. We need to know exactly what happened and we need to get outside input to help us interpret what happened and what are the consequences of what occurred. I do not believe that the board as a whole can effectively do this. As a committee, we'll be able to get some outside help to understand things and report back to the board. As a result, I prepared a charge to the committee and a memo that I'll submit for the minutes, but I want to read out loud right now. I hope that having this ad hoc committee will have the desired results of helping us make proper and well reasoned decisions about these issues. I this is going to the ad hoc, it's a memo. I am ceasing all the board members, but I will be sending this to Dina, Stephanie, Charlene and Ann, and if any of those four do not want to serve, please let me know privately and then I will have a different appointment. Pursuant to board policy 1330, temporary and ad hoc committees shall be created by the president at his or her discretion. I'm establishing an ad hoc committee in an effort to clarify the facts and the issues for the board so that it can reasonably and respectfully decide how to proceed in connection with the mascot issue. I request that the committee do the following. Determine the procedures that were followed during the board's prior actions to change the RPS mascot and report on what occurred and when it occurred and how it occurred. Consult with any needed experts and Robert rules of order to identify if things were done correctly. If not, what are the consequences of such actions? Report to the board on the facts, results and conclusions of the committee's research. Answer the questions. May the actions and decisions be properly revisited or reconsidered, and if so, how? Make recommendations to the board on what next steps might be, might or could be considered proper note, knowing that only the board has the authority to act on these issues. The committee should establish a timeline, which can be reasonably reasonably accomplish its work and report back to the board so that we know when we might expect the report from the committee. The superintendent is available to help coordinate the activities of the committee. And thank you for the your participation in this committee. And those will be going to the floor. Is there any other older new business, Allison?
I would like to make a motion that that be a committee of the whole because I think if the intent is to gather information and tell how that is used. Hurley, Hurley, I have the floor. Could you let me speak?
Sure.
I am speaking. So as a committee of the whole, the board would all be able to be engaged and have the information for the decision making for four members to decide what that information with, I think, does a disservice. And it's it's an action that the whole board needs to vote on. I don't really see the point of having a small committee, and I'm I'm not sure with the agenda of the action and decision to be reconsidered or revisited, I don't even know that that charge is in line with Robert's rules. So those are the questions that I have.
What that's what that committee is formed to do to look into this. No, I will stick with evoking my policy 1330 and making this an ad hoc committee. If the ad hoc committee decides to pull in the full board, that's up to them. Any member of the board can attend any committee meeting at any point in time because they all are duly warned. So you have that opportunity at that time. But thank you, Allison. Kevin?
I'd like to second the motion.
There's a motion on the floor to make this a committee of the whole. I will not, I first would need to suspend the rules with the two thirds majority to take up a motion that's not on the agenda. So I need to have a motion to suspend the rules first.
So moved.
I hear a second. Okay, it must be a two thirds majority. I will request a roll call. Aaron, if you would do a roll call to see about suspending the rules.
Okay, so to suspend the rules.
And and let me just clarify, to suspend the rules means to take up this motion tonight made by Allison and Kevin. That's what that would be, yes.
I have a point of order because if it's not, it wasn't warned on the agenda.
Yeah.
Because you just stated it. So I don't know that having a two thirds to discuss something.
I will rule that it must be a two thirds majority.
I am speaking. So if it was on the agenda from your omission is why it was not on the agenda. Had it been on the agenda, we certainly could discuss this. So I believe that was the way you crafted the agenda that you are now calling for two thirds to discuss the makeup of the ad hoc committee that was not on the agenda.
I do not believe I said that it was.
It's a point of order. So if you could.
Point of order overruled. We need to take the vote, two thirds majority for this.
And and what is the ruling? How is that based?
Allison, I'm calling it. It was not an omission from the agenda. We may do what we want. I listened to you last week, last month. This month, we're going to follow the rules the way they need to be done as we go into end depth training next Tuesday night. If you wanted this on the agenda, you should have made it. People, this is just a committee that I had as board chair the ability to appoint.
And we as a board have the ability to discuss.
I am I am closing this discussion. I'm going to say two thirds majority must rule to put it on the agenda. Kevin?
Can I make a suggestion that perhaps we have this whole discussion in this whole committee after we've had the training about Robert's Rules of Order, so we know what we're talking about?
I'm okay with that, too. I'm okay, but I have issued the charge for the committee. But yes. And as I said before, Kevin, anybody and everyone's welcome to every committee member. And if we postpone this until after the Robert's Rules training, people still can join afterwards if if the ruling at that point in time that it's a committee as a whole. Okay, thank you, Kevin, for that. Kathy?
Well, I just want to say that I was surprised that the ad hoc committee wasn't on the agenda because I had read about it in the Rutland Herald, and then I was really surprised that I didn't think there was going to be a discussion about it. So to me, that just supports what Allison is saying that.
It well, what it, excuse me just a minute, Kathy, one of the things that happened because it wasn't because it was in the Rutland Herald, I'm doing this. I do not have to as chair or president be able to run through who sits on what committee. And the committee assignments were already given out. We handed out the committee assignments at the last meeting. I did hear from a couple of people and I made a couple of changes. I have no problem with that. So I'm only doing this because of making sure for the Rutland Herald that we are transparent. And that's all I'm doing this for, for transparency. It's not anything that I would normally have to do as appointed committee, like when we last ad hoc committee we appointed was for superintendent evaluation. And that one was just appointed. There was no discussion on it. It was following under policy 1330. And that's what I'm going to go with tonight. And that's what I will be doing. Allison?
So I think that you have the reverse. The transparency would come with board discussing first and then in the Rutland Herald. Our committee assignments did not have information on what this committee was. It was a policy and procedure review, and that was not given at a public board meeting that was in an email. And this is the first time you've discussed the committee. And that is why we would like to discuss the committee.
There will be no discussion. I will be evoking 1330. You can you can probably talk to your former clerk where appeared to be a lot of information coming. This discussion is closed. As I have had with my legal advice, Mr. Mew, I am evoking my right for policy 1330, and we are doing this committee. If any of the four members do not want to serve, please contact me. I have spoken with all but one. Is there any other older new business to come before this?
We still haven't addressed the two thirds vote that you're calling for.
I'm just.
Participation.
Allison, but but two thirds vote, Aaron, please do roll call. Remember that if it's voting yes, you are saying that we need to have two thirds vote. Voting no means we do not have to, and this has to be passed by two thirds. And Allison, the conversation is done. Thank you. Aaron, please do.
The point of a two thirds vote is to vote of whether or not we're going to take up the issue, not whether.
Allison, I am glad you are the editor of Robert rules. But right now, if you would like to challenge this, I will say, okay, we will do a simple majority to see if we can do this with two thirds. Simple majority, Aaron. No discussion. I'm calling for Ann.
I need you to confirm and call the question, please, for clarity.
I am saying that at this point, I that this point is we need two thirds majority. There are people in here who are saying we do not need two thirds majority. If if by calling this means that we can pass Allison's motion on a simple majority going forward, if if we say no, not to confirm suspending the rules because that's the motion that was on the floor. And now, once we move to, here's how it would work. Once we move to suspend the rules, the rules get suspended. It's a simple majority. Yay or nay, it's a committee of the whole and not a committee of four. I then will revoke my committee of four, which will be at that point still active at that time. So a voting of yes means you are willing to take this matter up tonight. Of a vote of no means you are willing not to. And Aaron, please do roll call.
Right, so roll call to take this as a committee of the whole. Tricia, yay or nay? For suspension of the rules. Tricia?
Nay.
Kevin?
Yay.
Kathy?
Yes.
Ann?
Yes.
Allison?
Yes.
Dina?
Yes.
Brittany?
No.
Stephanie?
No.
And me, I suppose, no. So that's.
Don't forget me.
Early. Oh, Charlie. Charlene, I'm sorry. Charlene, yay or no?
I'll say no.
Okay, so one, two, three, four, five, and it's tied.
Okay, as board chair, I break tie. I I vote with the no's not to suspend the rules, so therefore the motion on the floor must carry a two thirds majority. And any discussion on the motion on the floor, or are we ready to call the question and vote on it by two thirds majority? Voting on the discussion would make the committee as a whole, the board as a committee of the whole versus committee I have established under 1330. Dina?
So just for not related to the actual vote, but when whichever committee it may be, we're looking to investigate kind of what has happened throughout the process. And when you refer to using outside resources, are you do you have anything specific in mind or is it?
I.
Since we're now or since none of us are yet experts.
I did. I did inquire that if we wanted a facilitator for for this type of meeting from the School Board Association, and they said they can make a recommendation of a couple of people. And that's as far as it got, as far as what I was thinking. And there could be other resources that you want. You might want to bring in a trainer. You might want to bring in something else. That's what sometimes that, you know, come to the board and that's that decision making process that we're looking at. Yeah, besides a facilitator, I've not thought about anything, but I don't want to limit any hands. And I want you to be able to do as this committee charged is to do. Okay, any other discussion? Okay, Aaron?
If there's no further discussion, I'd like to make a motion to go into executive session for the.
We have to take the vote on the floor first and it has to pass by two thirds majority.
But that was.
Because it was not on the agenda. What's that?
Okay.
Okay, and that emotion, Allison, do you want, that motion was made by Allison, seconded by Kevin, I believe.
Actually, Hurley, you, if point of order, you held the vote to say that we couldn't take it up.
Right, because we suspended the rules and we broke the vote.
All right, thank you so much. Now, Aaron.
It got really confusing there for a minute. Okay. So.
I have another piece of new business, if I may.
Okay. We're half hour behind.
I'd love to be quick. Yeah, so we all, I got I got a letter from the Chamber and Economic Development folks and they. the chamber and economic development folks and they recommended that we get similar kind of training to the kind that they're having about inclusion and equity and that sort of stuff. And I requested that it be on the agenda and it didn't get on the agenda and I didn't get a response. So I'm asking now, will that be on?
And I apologize about that, Kevin. We did meet with them. They are actually giving us the name. I have the name of the woman who was, who's coordinating it, it for them. And I certainly would like to bring it up. It will be on the agenda next month. And again, the reason why it wasn't this month because we were thinking of, we needed to shorten because the eight o'clock.
I understand. I just hadn't heard back.
Yeah, and I apologize and it will be definitely on the agenda.
Okay, good. Thank you. Sorry for the delay.
Oh, no, no delay.
That was a good point. That was, that was a nice piece you brought in. Okay, so I'd like to move to go to executive session for the purposes of hearing a grievance and negotiation matters that premature release would put the board at a disadvantage.
I second.
All those in favor? Any opposed? So be it. We will go into executive session, find your link.